Chris is out there too.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today's Tuesday, November eighth, it's Election Day. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present. The regular meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Cooper will deliver the invocation.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item three, approve the minutes of October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting as presented by the county clerk, Connie Becken.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider and possibly approve the following. First is a request to cancel all rest claims from October twenty-fifth, the cash statement and the quarterly report for quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. All of these will be presented by the county treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams, how are you doing?
Good. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of nine hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. On our cash report, in general checking, we have eight million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. In tax pool general, we have one million, one thousand, three hundred, seven dollars and eighty-eight cents for totaling cash funds of nine million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. On our quarterly report, this is the quarter ending nine thirty, twenty twenty-two. In general checking, we had eleven million, nine hundred five thousand, nine twenty-seven eighteen. In tax pool general, we had three hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty cents for total eleven million, nine oh six, two hundred and fifty, forty-eight. It shows a decrease in the cash balance for the third quarter of twenty twenty-two in the amount of four million, three hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. We opened a new tax pool account for the art funding, the second amount. We've earned twenty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-one cents in interest on that account.
Do we get to keep that, or they're gonna take it back? We get to keep it? Great. According to Mr. Cooper, he's saying yes.
Yeah.
Till they change their mind. All right, sounds good. Anything else you want to present? All right, if not, I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I discuss one more thing?
Absolutely.
Trying to work with the bank, I can't get the wording on the letter to meet everybody's approval, where they're wanting to pay us more interest as the interest rates are rising, so, um, once we can get that done. But I am working on it and trying to get it all together, so.
I, I know you're, uh, you're talking about, uh, that they're wanting to pay us more in interest because the rates are going up. And do we have to address that every time, or is there a way to make it where we address it one time or everything?
Well, we're, that's what I'm trying to get an amendment to the contract, so that it leaves that amount open with just that floor, that they can't drop below the original contract.
So we can just do one amendment?
We can just one amendment, have it done.
You think you'll have it ready in a couple of weeks, or just depends on what the bank does?
I just keep emailing them, emailing them, I keep waiting on the bank.
Okay. When do we go out, uh, for bids on that?
We're gonna have to go out for bids in January, it'll be open again.
That'd be fun, wouldn't it?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Candace McKinney, Assistant County Auditor. Good morning, Ms. McKinney.
Good morning.
Okay.
Pre-approved expenditures for October the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, were three hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Pre-approved expenditures for October thirty-first through November third, twenty twenty-two, were six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today, November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, are one hundred and ninety-two thousand, ten dollars and fifty-one cents. The total expenditures and transfers are one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Gross payroll for November third, twenty twenty-two was five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. The total transfer for the, November the third payroll was six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents.
Please pay the county bill.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Yes, sir.
Item six, consider adoption of resolution thirty dash twenty-two in support of project safety for our local communities and protections to the Big Thicket National Preserve with the retention of native vegetation on U.S. Highway sixty-nine, gateway to the Big Thicket Parkway, as requested by Ms. Ellen Buchanan and Mary Bernard with the Big Thicket Association. Just going, okay.
Stay.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall to table this item. Let me just state that the reason we're doing that is that, uh, the, uh, district engineer for Beaumont, Mr. Gonzalez, would like to be here to present, uh, TexDOT's side of this, I guess, or their plans before we make a decision. I also received a call late yesterday afternoon from Congressman Babin's office, and they would like to be here as well. And they could not be here today, or, let me say it like this, I told them I felt like this would be tabled today because TexDOT could not be here, and they said that was good for them, they would like to come on November the twenty-second, whenever we take this up. Ms. Buchanan, if you'd like to say anything, you sure can, otherwise, we'll table this and we'll come back to court on November twenty-second.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We appreciate y'all's consideration, we completely understand about the tabling. We did just want to come today to let you know that we were adamant about this, um...
And just so everybody knows, this has to do with the sixty-nine corridor project between, uh, Village Mills, and it goes into Tava County, it's about, uh, thirteen miles, is that correct?
About fifteen miles goes.
And this has to do with TexDOT's plans to clearcut all the trees in the median during that, during that, uh, stretch of roadway.
So we appreciate y'all's consideration, we understand about the tabling, and we'll see you back in two weeks.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and this will be on the November twenty-second agenda at, uh, ten a.m. Item seven, consider and possibly approve Commissioner Cooper's request to set a policy whereby all proposed salary increases will be submitted to the Salary Committee by the elected official or department head, and that committee will make wage recommendations to Commissioners Court. The court will only increase an employee's wage during the budget process for the following fiscal year and not during the middle of the budget year from this date forward. Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, yes, Judge, um, I had spoke with, uh, with you after our last meeting in reference to this. I would like to, uh, to make a note, Commissioner, uh, Roberts brought this to my attention, that, uh, the way this is worded, it says any salary increase. Our, our policy would still stand if, if a department head or an elected official had an opening within their, uh, department, and they moved somebody into that position, if it was already budgeted, uh, they would move somebody into that position. So whoever they've been moving in that position might get a salary increase, but it's not coming to the court and asking for, uh, an increase in budget. So I wanted to make a note on that. That would not affect that policy. That, uh, this would not affect that policy.
So, and also, if you brought somebody in at a lower rate and gave them that ninety-day probation and raised them up, because obviously it doesn't go over what's budgeted, is what you're talking about.
Correct. This is, any, any budget increase is, is...
Yeah, anything, anything coming from outside our, our normal budget, if it's already within our budget, it's good.
Yes.
Okay. For that, for that position.
For that position.
Yeah, I agree with that. This won't be a personnel policy, this is a policy that the court's gonna go by going forward. This is not an amendment to the personnel policy, is that correct?
And, uh, Commissioner Roberts had brought that up because of the way the wording, but I just wanted to make a note that that wouldn't affect that.
So if you'd like to make a motion the way you want it worded?
Second.
You want it worded so that it's not, uh, basically that the court will not increase a position's budgeted amount during the budget year? Is that how you word that?
Yes, sir.
And the second is by Commissioner Kirkendall? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Any questions from H.R. or Auditor's Office? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, discussion and possible action on using R and B contingency to pay for fuel cost overages in the fiscal year twenty-two budget due to unforeseen rising in fuel costs, as requested by Commissioner Kirkendall and Commissioner Young. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Kirkendall, since he has to place this on the agenda.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna ask that we table it. Uh, Judge and I had a good meeting this morning. We need to meet with Angela when she gets back, so we're gonna try to set up a meeting for the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, there may be a, a possibility of, uh, absorbing the, uh, overages on fuel, and, uh, and we still may have to do contingency. The judge has affirmed that he will do that as well. Uh, so I want to ask that we table it, and just, as a matter of general public, uh, fuel costs more than double, and we saw that on our budgets this year. And so now it's just figuring out a way that we can pay the most without having to go into contingency, so we'll table it.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to table this line item. And that being definitely until you can have a foot, put it back on if we need to.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
I, I just want to say, and I probably, I may not be in office when this all takes place. But when we set budgets, they have to be flexible, because we don't know the future. And it's just like our materials and supplies have doubled, not just fuel and oil. Um, we went through this, um, last, I think it was last meeting, or meeting before. Um, limestone was doubled in, doubled in price. We went from paying seven, a little over seven thousand for three hundred tons to over fifteen thousand for three hundred tons. So, it's, it's, and, uh, that's just an example. Asphalt's gone up, crushed concrete's gone up, everything has gone up. And when we set our budget, we were setting our budget on last year's prices, basically. So like I said, knowing what's going on in the future is impossible. So, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna end up having to do budget amendments, uh, the court will, not necessarily me. But, uh, it, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna take place just because of the economy. It would be great if everything turned around and came back down, but I, I just don't see that.
Ms. Young, go ahead.
Um, I actually have two invoices that were on the same date, um, a year apart. And in June of twenty twenty-one, we're paying two fifty-one a gallon for diesel. And in June of twenty twenty-two, we're paying four eighty-four a gallon for diesel. So, um, that's just where the over just came from, and I agree that we need to table this until we talk to Angela and stuff. But, um, that's just what we're looking at now.
Well, with that said, I think it'd be a good time to remind everybody it's Election Day. Yes.
Yes, it is.
And, uh, just for the record, my position on this is that, uh, yes, we will use the fund balance or contingency, whatever we want to call that, as a last resort to make sure we cover any overages in the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Any other discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cooper, Commissioner Kirkendall, and Commissioner Roberts to pay the following invoices. Invoice number two four five nine one three to Gary Whitman Materials in the amount of ten thousand, forty dollars and fifty-four cents for crushed concrete for R and B one. Invoice number two zero one one two two five two zero for, to Texas Materials Group Incorporated for thirteen thousand, eight thirteen seventy-four for limestone base for R and B two. Invoice number two oh one one two one five seven four to Texas Materials Group Incorporated for fifteen thousand, seven thirty-two thirty-six for limestone base for the R and B four department. And invoice number two oh one one two six oh five seven to Texas Materials Group Incorporated in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred, three dollars and seventy cents for crushed concrete for the R and B four department.
Salute. Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Well, again, Judge, a lot of this increase is coming from a fuel surcharge, so...
And material surcharge.
And material, yeah.
Uh, and, and I, and I know this might not, and once again, I get to interject. I'm, I love this part about going out of office. What, what the court may look, uh, look at for the next year is, uh, maybe, I know our, our limit of picking up things is ten thousand dollars. Uh, when I took office, what, it was five or seven, we bumped it to ten because of the same thing. Uh, now, looking at it going ahead, you may want to bump it up to twenty thousand. Let the Commissioners have a right, you know, to go out and get their materials, that way we don't have to keep doing this in budget amendments in, in the court.
I checked with the purchasing agent the other day, and that's in the purchasing policy, and it's been there for, since before we came into office, that it's at ten thousand. So it would require a, an amendment to the purchasing policy, if anybody wants to do that. Get with her and bring it to court, we'll look at it. Any other discussion?
What, what did, uh, I think it was either you or the purchasing agent had suggested that if we get POs in advance, we wouldn't have to go?
Yeah, you could do a blanket PO to these, uh, companies, and you wouldn't have to do that.
Okay.
Right, I say it right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, consider request to create an auto purchase line item in the Road and Bridge Departments and transfer funds as follows for the purchase of the two thousand twenty-two Ford F two fifty vehicles, approved in Commissioners Court on October twenty-fifth. Fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars will be transferred from oh one seven six two one five seventy to oh one seven six two one three three four, I'm sorry. Yeah, from all these line items, I'm sorry. So it's fourteen thousand, five hundred from equipment purchase, from materials and supplies, and from auto purchase in the R and B one department budget. I still said that wrong. Fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars from equipment purchase, four thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars from materials and supplies to a new line item, zero one seven six two one five seven four, titled auto purchase. That's in the R and B one department. Then the R and B three department, you would take thirty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars from equipment purchase and, uh, transfer it into the new auto purchase line item, zero one seven six two three five seven four. And then in the R and B four department, it would be seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the equipment purchase line item into the new line item auto purchase, which would be zero one seven six two four five seven four. Correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a motion on that?
Salute.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Those vehicles were supposed to be here two weeks ago, and they're still not here, but hopefully they'll be here, we'll do this with you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Want to also state that, uh, Commissioner Cooper brought up this morning that since these vehicles are taking longer to come in, it may change the trade-in amounts on the vehicles they're trading in. Those prices were good through the end of October. So we may have to revisit that and come back to court to make another amendment if they don't get those vehicles here. Maybe we'll stick the chair for them. Anyway, item number eleven. Consider approval of request by Regina Bolton, Health Inspector, to accept grant funds from Lawmark Community Grants Foundation in the amount of two thousand dollars for the annual Hardin County Courthouse Christmas tree lighting, which will be held December the sixth, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty p.m.
Salute. Second.
And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Thank you for the filter.
Yes, sir, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, consider request by Alex Parker, Flood Plane Administrator, to approve the Hardin County Industrial Permit Application, including solar and wind, five acres or greater, a one thousand dollar fee for five acres or more up to one hundred acres, and two hundred and fifty dollar fee for each additional twenty acres or portion thereof. Fees are due when development is approved by the county engineer. This is a new application that's, uh, being brought to the court to consider, because there are, um, at least one or two companies that are looking to, uh, locate these solar farms in Hardin County. Alex, would you like to talk about it?
Yes, sir, uh, for the better half of this year, I've been researching all over the country, all of the state of Texas, on the, any type of regulations, permits, or anything like that. The only way we can permit them, really, is just through, uh, Title forty-four, the Code of Federal Regulations, Chapter, Subchapter B, Part sixty, Subpart A, sixty point three. That's where we're gonna have to, it's, it's considered a development. These, uh, developments are in our watershed. One is in the northern part of Boggy Creek, and the other one is in the, uh, part of Pine Island Bayou. And it's an unstudied part, but we now have the LIDAR and the engineering for that area. So, in that case, we need to have it permitted. When FEMA comes in, they want to see the permit for this industrial site. So, um, lately, I found out, and I got with Livingston. Livingston is the only other county in the state of Texas that I know of that is permitting these, these solar farms, wind farms, and things like that. Uh, they got three going over there, actively under construction. Uh, the one that I know of is east of the dam at Lake Livingston. So, I did, uh, research on that, I talked to Livingston. They said they came in, they got their permits, and they went straight to work.
Move it.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, you know, the federal funds is what's making these contractors do this. When the funds run out, they're gonna be a mess to be cleaned up, and this money's not even gonna cover that. So, that's just mine.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other discussion? Thank you, Alex. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item thirteen, present results of bids received for motor, motor fuel, oil, and lubricants for all Road and Bridge Departments and emergency generators and possibly award to successful vendors. Good morning, Ms. Sims. If it's okay with the court, I'd like to ask Ms. Sims to read off the low bid for each of these to, uh, an interest of ten. And, uh, for everybody's knowledge, these are on file in the county clerk's office and on the county website. As of, uh, it's on the county website today, it's been there since Friday, and this will be in the county clerk's office at the court today, if anybody wants to see all the bids. Ms. Sims, please proceed.
Bids were opened on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at two p.m. in the purchasing department office. Myself and Stacy Eckert were present. Um, just want to remind you that mo, for motor fuel, we evaluated by the markup and other charges due to rack price changing daily. So for diesel, Suncoast Resources with the low, had the lowest markup. And for gasoline, Midtex had the lowest markup.
So two different vendors on this cycle?
Yes, sir. Is that okay with everybody?
This is gonna be, uh, this is gonna be something new. Maybe it won't be a problem. Usually, we had the same vendor.
So, it's, it's just quite a bit of difference this time. Whatever y'all want to do is, um, I mean, I'm good with it, I'm just, um...
I agree with your recommendation.
We use both vendors for, so...
So for Suncoast, the diesel would be, uh, point oh eight two five per gallon above the rack price, is that, am I reading that right?
Well, if you add the other charges, it's point oh eight four four.
Okay.
And if you, Midtex diesel would be point one oh seven one four three.
Got you. Big difference. All right, what's your problem?
For automatic transmission fluid, um, I, from my understanding, nobody buy, you all don't buy it by the fifty-five gallon drum anymore, so I've, I tried to redo this one to order, um, evaluating it by the gallon, so that's what I'm gonna read off. Um, for automatic transmission fluid, Tricon is at one, I'm sorry, seventeen twenty-two a gallon for the low bidder. And the next is motor oil. Our, uh, bid specs for motor oil were out of date, and so I've added quite a few other variations. Um, one thing I want to point out is that Mighty of Southeast Texas, they had a letter attached regarding their bid. They're only holding the price for ninety days. So I went ahead and marked a number one and number two for all of these, just to save some time. Um, so SAE thirty, Tricon is number two at nineteen eighty-five a gallon, and Mighty of Southeast Texas, number one, at ten thirty-six a gallon. For SAE forty, Mighty of Southeast Texas at eighteen sixty-nine a gallon is number one. Tricon is number two at nineteen eighty-nine a gallon. OW twenty Dexos Full Synthetic, Mighty of Southeast Texas, number one at nineteen sixteen a gallon, and Tricon at twenty-six twenty a gallon. Five W twenty Full Synthetic, Mighty of Southeast Texas at nineteen oh eight a gallon, and Tricon, number two, at twenty-two eighty-nine a gallon. Five W thirty Dexos Full Synthetic, Mighty of Southeast Texas at nineteen six, I'm sorry, nineteen fifty-six a gallon is number one, and number two would be Tricon at twenty-five ninety-one a gallon. Five W forty Diesel Full Synthetic, number one is Midtex, at twenty-seven twenty-nine a gallon, and number two would be Mighty at twenty-seven eighty-three a gallon. OW twenty Synthetic Blend, number one is Midtex at fourteen eighty-five a gallon, and Mighty at nineteen thirty-three a gallon would be number two. Five W twenty Synthetic Blend, Mighty of Southeast Texas at, is number one at fourteen forty-four a gallon, and Midtex at seventeen oh one a gallon is number two. Five W thirty Synthetic Blend, Mighty of Southeast Texas is number one at fourteen forty-four a gallon, and Midtex is number two at seventeen oh one a gallon.
On your, um, on your notes, where it's highlighted, it says number one, but on the left, it says number two.
So that was, on the left is gonna be the fifty-five gallon drum.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one...
Probably did that earlier, I'm just gonna pick it next.
I said it, but I didn't point out that I had marked them. Um, the next one is twenty W fifty Synthetic Blend. Mighty is number one at sixteen dollars a gallon, and Tricon is number two at twenty dollars and eighty-one cents a gallon. Five W forty CK four Full Synthetic, Suncoast is number one at fourteen oh six a gallon, and Midtex number two at twenty-seven twenty-nine a gallon. Fifteen W forty CK four Synthetic Blend. Suncoast is number one at thirteen oh two a gallon, and Midtex number two at sixteen twenty-eight a gallon. Ten W thirty CK four Synthetic Blend. Suncoast is number one, fourteen thirty-six a gallon, and number two is Mighty at seventeen sixty-seven a gallon. Hydraulic oil, AW forty-six. Midtex is number one at ten, I'm sorry, Midtex is number two at ten dollars and thirty cents a gallon, and Suncoast is number one at eight fifty a gallon. And hydraulic oil, AW sixty-eight. Suncoast is number one at eight fifty a gallon, and Midtex number two at ten sixty-three a gallon.
Any questions regarding the presentation?
Let's accept.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall to accept as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for your thorough work on that, Mr. Number fourteen, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for grant application and management services relating to the Texas Department of Agriculture two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Community Development Fund Competitive Application Cycle. If approved, appoint a committee to evaluate the submitted received and make recommendations to the court.
Salute. Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Would you like to name that committee?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kirkendall, Clay Woodward, and Amanda Holland.
And they're all here, and nobody's saying, "Don't put me on that committee," so they'll be on there. That part of your, um, motion, Commissioner Cooper?
Yes, sir.
And your second, Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agents to list at qualification statements for engineering services relating to the Texas Department of Agriculture two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Community Development Fund Competitive Application Cycle. If approved, appoint a committee to evaluate the submitted received and make recommendations to Commissioners Court. Will that, that be the same committee?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Salute.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Item sixteen, consider approval of request by Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to appoint a Healthy County Committee to offer recommendations for county-specific incentives and present to Commissioners Court for consideration. Harrington, would you like to name that committee?
Yes, sir, um, Shirley Cook, Mike Custer, Amani Hamilton, um, myself, Amber Meredith, Mike Piper, and Michelle Phillips.
Salute.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? Everybody's agreed to serve?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item seventeen, discussion only by any county official of any item, not on the agenda, without taking action. Mrs. Becken, would you like to say anything about the election?
Uh, yeah, I just want to let everybody know that we had a good time turnout for early voting. We had over ten thousand people, uh, that early voted. We've mailed out six hundred and seventy-five mail-out ballots and received five hundred and seventy-one in. And then, as of this morning, when I walked down here, we were at seventeen oh eight, uh, votes for today.
Wow, great. There you go. Thank you.
So we're busy.
That's great. Any Commissioner? Any Commissioner have anything they wanna say or discuss? Any other official present wanna discuss anything? Alright, if not, we'll move into our workshop. I don't know that everybody's staying for the workshop, but everybody's welcome to. But we're all gonna ask our, uh, engineer...
Are you gonna take comments from the public? I, I couldn't comment on solar forms.
Uh, at the time that item was on the agenda was when the comment period was, but if you'd like to say something, we'll be glad to hear it.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Ellen McCannan, big ticket natural heritage dress. You would think that I am all for solar forms. And I am, except location, location, location. And as our floodplain coordinator said, this new one, uh, that's in the West Harden Independent School District, is at the headwaters of Pine Island Bayou. Um, if you look at the wetlands up there, it's surrounded by wetlands. I realize they're gonna probably put them in, not in the wetlands, but huge issue for us and for the whole county. You cut down two thousand acres of trees, what does that do to flooding? And we all know that a lot of our flooding starts from upper county. Um, the solar, the new solar farm that Energy has bought into, or they're gonna buy the energy that's in Pope County, we have been working with that solar farm. And so, we will do the same thing. We'll contact these folks, see what we can get. So I appreciate y'all. That, that's two thousand acres, so that fee that you're gonna put on them is, is great. Um, and the same way, I, I don't know how we can stop these things. I'm all for solar, but it's location of the solar. So any way that I can help, we can help with that. Um, but we'll be contacting these folks to see. They have these reinvestment zones. I'm not sure exactly how all, all this works, but as I understand, the taxes that are collected go back into that reinvestment zone. So I don't understand that, where this company is gonna pay the taxes, and then the money goes back to them. There was a big article in the Houston Chronicle not too long ago about this reinvestment zone there on Post Oak at the Galavera. And if you've been down there, you can see, that's a fabulous road. Man, is it pretty. Two blocks from that zone, people have to wait for the bus in the rain. It's not a covered bus stop. So all the money goes there. Um, we have people that are hurting in the county. Those taxes should not stay just in that area.
Well, in my opinion, n- none of these solar companies have asked for reinvestment zones, have they? Not from the county, but they've asked the Coont School District, and I think they're in the process of talking to, uh, West Harden. They're about to have a, a public hearing.
They had it last night.
Or was it last night?
I didn't read my sales DVD early enough, and I, that's all I knew, and I read it, and I, 'cause I pay taxes to West Harden, so I would've been there to see. No, no. So we'd be glad to help on that, uh, a- absolutely. We want solar, but it needs to be, it doesn't need to be at the headwaters of, uh, Pine Island Bayou.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alright, we wanna get our, uh, is anybody out in the hallway for the workshop? So we need to bring them in, and anybody who wants to stay, of course, is welcome. Anybody who wants to leave, this is a good time. Not kicking you out, but... So how would that look?
Thank y'all, thanks.
I guess when they collect their taxes, it'd be, however that works, it would be, well, the taxes coming to the children should be a factor, not the money. Cause they're saying, I think you're gonna be a little less than God. Yeah, that's what they, well, they might ask. Haven't yet? I don't know.
You're bad, I'm staying.
Cause we're all at the same time, it's just basically done. Good morning, gentlemen. How are y'all? Candace, are you gonna stay? You're up on the stage? If you leave, I won't let them use your paper, but if you're gonna stay, that's no problem. They can... I'm not, I don't...
I can move my seven names in here, and I can sit out there.
That's fine. You wanna do that? Y'all mind swapping places for first? Whoever needs to present first can sit there.
No, you have a table to sit on.
Zeke and Mayor, good morning. How are y'all? Ms. Zimmerman, good morning. Ms. Clark? How are you this morning? Is anybody here from Philly? Yeah, City of Coons, anybody here from the City of Philly? I didn't say it in the last meeting, but how about those Astros?
How about you Astros?
Oh, that was a rerun, I saw. I'm sure you enjoyed watching it about the third time, too. Still can't get over that home run. Did y'all done? Yeah, got a blast. That's the only person I ever seen who'd have balled it for was Nubbin Hee. While, uh, Mr. Levens is setting up, before we start the workshop, I just wanna make a few introductions. So our grand administrators on the front row right here, Patrick Wilchire with Public Management. Uh, the City of Sour Lake is back here on the back row. Have y'all met already?
Yes.
Alright, great. And, uh, City of... The City of Lumberton's sitting right next to him, the city manager, Steve Clark. And then the City of Sylvie's on the other end down here, Ms. Deanne Zimmerman. And she has somebody with her, but I don't know her, so I apologize for that. But good morning, thank you for being here. Lumberton Mud's right here, Rob Starr. I think you know Rob, don't you? And then on the back row, the G L O is back here. Wanna introduce yourself, Sydney?
Hi, I'm Sydney Robinson.
And then we have the engineer from the City of Lumberton, Sean Bergen-Pope, right up here, right? That's Troy. He's brought, uh, I can't remember his name, but he's brought his guy with him, the guy that knows everything. And then our engineer, uh, for this project is Whiteley Oliver, and he's getting his computer set up, and we're gonna get started with our workshop. And I forgot, Ms. McCannan was here for the regular meeting, but she's sitting right behind you. Y'all, y'all can meet there, too. That's the big ticket association. And we have our appointed county clerk, Connie Beckman, but tomorrow should be called the elected county clerk. That's on record, I got that. I wake up dead, it's gonna be the blame.
No.
That other elected coming up is Ernie Cook, but he's there. Where are you going? I don't know. He's buying some drinks, I was kinda stuck. Yes, I would think so. I ain't surprised. Can't believe you ain't.
I'm sorry, getting good about other minutes, too, too long getting into something.
Alright, one minute counts. Yeah, we can do that. While Jeff's getting ready, let me just make a, uh, let me go ahead and read this item on the agenda. Item eighteen is a workshop, discuss possible proposed project, projects to fund utilizing the Texas G L O C D B G mitigation funding allocated to Harden County. Uh, that amount, of course, is, uh, we've discussed several times, is twenty-three point eight billion coming to Harden County. Uh, Jefferson and Orange County, that money went to the drainage districts, but we don't have a drainage district, so it came to the county. We had a project that we've been talking about for a number of years. We called it several different things, but it's the Eastbound Storm Drain Project. Sending the water directly east into the Nature's River from Lumberton, trying to get it out into the Gulf before, uh, the Pine Island Bayou rises in a, in a heavy rainstorm event. Uh, preliminary projections on that project shows that it's not really feasible to spend money to do that. And, uh, Jeff will go into a little more detail than I just did about that, but we're not gonna get into the weeds on it. Uh, basically, it would not, uh, benefit the area enough to do that project. So, they've been looking at some other projects. I know that DD six had, uh, identified a couple of projects for us to look at. Jeff has been talking to their engineers, and when I say Jeff, that's Jeff Levens with Whiteley Oliver. And, uh, uh, he's also looked at some other projects. I think he's talked to each of the Commissioners. It was decided last week that he would reach out to each of y'all to see if y'all had any ideas. And then come in here today, and let's, uh, we brought our city partners and Lumberton Mud. We invited all of the cities and all of the, uh, Water Department, uh, personnel to come in, and let's talk about drainage, and identify any other projects that we might could use this money on. And then, uh, from there, the grand administrator and engineer will work together on the benefits of those. We'll come back next Monday and kind of rank those projects and decide what we want to see on an application for the C D B G M E P monies. Jeff, are you ready?
I think so.
I'm gonna move you to the top. And, uh, it is set up where you can share your screen when you're ready. When you do so, all the Commissioners will see it, and also the, uh, public who's present and watching livestream will be able to see that as well.
I have a question for you.
Commissioner Kirkendall, go ahead.
Jeff, will you approach these projects as L M I, non-L M I, or you just gonna look at them as a projects? Uh, will you share them with the, with the...
As far as today, it's, it's, it was just gonna be, uh, just an open discussion, uh, as far as just projects completely down, uh, kinda down the list.
But I think it's good to keep in mind that if, uh, somebody sees a project and would wonder why in the world would we go in that location, that we do have to spend fifty percent of this money in low to moderate, moderate income areas, so... And, and, uh, Jeff and Patrick will be able to discuss that in more detail at the next meeting, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah, in fact, we're gonna throw a L M I map to start with, just so that we can have, um, get that, that recognition.
Sounds good.
Uh, sure.
Anywhere you'd like, whatever's comfortable for you.
Last time I was there, I felt, I felt odd because that was my back was there, but it's all the same. So, what's on the screen now, there's two things that I think are important that we talked about. Um, the first one being the low and moderate income requirement, and, uh, the other being the schedule. I don't, I don't have a schedule on the screen, but let's just talk about the L M I requirement. So this map, uh, is Harden County, and the pink shaded, uh, areas are, uh, identified as low and moderate income block groups within Harden County. Okay? Um, you know, the objective and the requirement of the funds we've discussed, uh, and, and certainly what we talked about at the last, at that public hearing, was that we needed to spend half of the twenty-three million dollars in L M I eligible areas. And, and that can be defined in a number of ways. Right, right now, we're showing that as block groups. And this is census data that is then generalized into the American Community Survey, and, uh, this is updated on, on a fiber average. And so this is, this is the most recent data we've got. And so these, you know, you guys kind of recognize, you know, where these areas are, you know, some of these block groups are pretty large. Um, sparse and populated, and some of them are a little, you know, more condensed, uh, condensed populated. Uh, you know, so we have to kind of fit our projects within these, if we use block group data within these block groups, and it would benefit, uh, what is defined as a substantial portion of that, of that census geographic area that we utilize, right? So if I say, we're gonna use a block group, then I've gotta be able to show a project within that block group or adjacent to that block group that would benefit substantial portion of population in that block group. Years ago, we would have a numeric value associated to what that meant. It used to be sixty percent. We would say, well, if we could say sixty percent of an area would benefit from that project, maybe use the entire block. They don't, they don't define that numerically for us anymore. They just say substantial, right? So, you know, we're looking at, at least the majority of our population within a block group would need to benefit from that project for us to utilize that data. We can combine, we can combine block groups together, so long as they're, uh, contiguous, so that they're adjacent, uh, to utilize that as a benefit area for our project. Um, that's, that's another way. Um, there's other, you know, ways to utilize data sets that the G L O has offered us, and, and, uh, we refer to that as the upper quartile. So every city and every county within the state has, um, has an L M I, a low and moderate income percentage associated to the, to, to, to the place, to the city, or to the county. And, uh, you know, we're giving some amount of latitude in terms of, you know, what the G L O has given to us, of what we can use for an upper quartile. So it kind of lessens, um, the low and moderate income requirement for us to achieve, uh, on that, so that's, that's another way. And then finally, the last way that we would, um, go about trying to identify L M I populations is to do a door-to-door survey. And for some of y'all in this room, you guys, uh, in certain jurisdictions, you, you've seen that happen, or you've been part of that, and we've done a lot of those, right? So, uh, that's the, that's the onslaught. So we have these areas that are eligible within, uh, the requirements of the program that we could, uh, utilize. Um, and, um, you know, we've gotta massage that out. And the other thing that, you know, we're really, you know, sort of up against is that we've got, we've got a deadline. Uh, our application is due, uh, for this region on January thirteenth. And, you know, we need to kind of work through projects, and we need to, you know, kind of receive some comment, before we can proceed with the application, which ultimately needs to be put back out for public consumption for at least fourteen days. And so this is, you know, so we've kind of been going through this multi-phase approach of, you know, public comment. I think that the county and Judge Commissioners were doing a phenomenal job of soliciting that, so that we can have, uh, the information that, that we need as a consulting team, to, to, uh, to develop something timely in an effort to meet that deadline. And so that's the, that's the initial onslaught that we thought wanted to sort of go through, uh, so that everybody understood that, you know, there is gonna be a lot of need in the county, and, uh, and, and I don't think anybody's taking that away from, from anywhere. Half of the money has to be spent, for lack of a better example, in an area that is pink on this map. Or benefiting areas that are pink on this map. Uh, and that, and that can pose challenges, and that can pose some, you know, some struggles for us to make sure that we, that we achieve that, because there's no version of this application that is not fully the amount of the allocation. Right, so, um, maybe if there's any questions, I can answer that, if we wanna go through questions on that case.
Can you send us this map?
Yeah. Yeah, we can just speak now. There's no issues with that.
Does anybody have any questions about that initial project I brought up, that Eastbound Storm Drain? Does anybody have? I mean, as I said, it, it doesn't look like it's feasible to do that, so we're passing that on and looking at, you know, one, two, three, four other projects that we can use this money. And the directive that I and the commissioners' court have given to our engineer and our grant administrator as consultants is very simple, just we wanna get the best bang for our buck. And we don't wanna create a problem for anybody south of us, or not just south of us, but anywhere, let the water flow south. So, we don't wanna create any problems for them, we wanna meet our objective of making sure that this is a regional improvement for all the southeast Texas region, and again, to get the best bang for our buck.
I agree, it's gonna definitely pose a problem with someone looking in from the outside that's not familiar with what you just went over. Because if you look at that map, not that any of these other areas doesn't have drainage problem, but our major drainage problem right now is not covered by this pink.
Right, but we can spend fifty percent of that money there.
Right. And, you know, just so, so I can say this again, is, they, we can massage out the area, and when I say that, you know, the project may not, uh, be located in a pink area. We look upstream, downstream, to who would benefit from that, from that project. So long as we, you know, feel comfortable with the area, then we'll utilize as much of the existing data sets that we can. Uh, you know, you can combine various block groups together, uh, so long as they're contiguous, that, uh, that that provides a benefit to the entire area. If that entire area that we define is, uh, you know, based on the data, low and moderate income, then, then we're good, right? But it is, just, we wanna just make sure that we're stating some of the challenges that we have at the onset.
So, can you sexualize, sexualize, I can't say tough today. The, if, if the block area, say, say a portion of that block area could be LMI. You know, that's not in the block area, uh, you know, like, I'm saying this backwards, unblocked area. It could be a portion in that area that could be LMI. Can you break that off and use that money in that, do we have to go in and do a survey of that area?
Well, it, you know, it really gets into the, um, you know, if we've got, you know, block group, and, you know, our project is just gonna benefit, say, a small subdivision, you say, within Lumberton, right? Then, uh, you know, we may not be able to use that entire block group, that would necessitate a door-to-door survey, if, if it's not a big enough benefit area. So, the benefit area is, uh, you know, pretty critical at this stage, as well as the projects. So, they, they're really going hand-to-hand, so that we can sort of find out, you know, what this, you know, what these needs are, and who all is, because we have to tell the GLO who's in a benefit, and we have to substantiate that with data, data sets. Either that's a survey, or a survey, or it's the census data that we utilize that is sort of represented with these, with these shaded, uh, block groups.
And let me just say too, when we were talking earlier, uh, I guess last week, about the possibility of doing any door-to-door surveys, uh, these guys know to talk to the city managers, the commissioners, uh, before any time is wasted. Because y'all know whether or not that's going to possibly be a, uh, an LMI area after those surveys are done. So, we're not gonna do any door-to-door surveys in the neighborhood where you know, uh, for instance, Pinewood, we wouldn't do a door-to-door survey there. We know that wouldn't meet, but there's other areas that would, and they'll consult with y'all before they do anything like that.
Okay. So, we're supposed to meet again on the fourteenth?
Whatever Monday is.
Yes.
That's, that's not a very long time.
Right.
My concern is, I haven't sat down with you or Jeff, and even discussed, you know, areas in, in the city. I do know that our LMI is very low. It's gonna be hard to, to find an area that we can really be affected. But if you can split that money up, half of it has to go to, to LMI, you know, we could probably, I've got lots of projects.
And, and thus far, that's the approach we've taken, on, on, on just lifting up some approximate, uh, project.
I'd like to sit down with a few guys and my engineer before next Monday, and, and look at them, and then you tell me, yeah, this would be a good, or no, that, that ain't gonna work.
Well, that's what we're gonna do here today, but after today, if y'all wanna meet one-on-one, that's totally, and that's goes for everybody, that's totally fine, no problem. But I think y'all have some projects now to kind of pull up.
That's a great segue for it.
It, it is, and, um...
And if any of these that we talked about today are not what you have in mind, let them know today or after today, anytime soon.
Before the fourteenth.
Right, before Friday.
And, and so...
Here, two o'clock next Monday?
Two o'clock, that's one.
And so, again, not, not to get too far down in the weeds on, on some different projects, but thus far, um, we've put together just a, a small list of, of some potential projects. And we'll kind of start at the southern part of the county, um, here in Lumberton, uh, in the Woodcrest area. Um, I've met with, um, Commissioner Roberts, uh, the possibility of going in and regrading, uh, and resetting, uh, culverts, and regrading roadside ditches in the Woodcrest area, do drainage improvements there. Um, even kind of next to that, in the southern part of, um, of Lumberton, the El Pinto, um, ditch improvements, possibly Adler ditch improvements. And again, I know there's some things that have been talked about, um, boy, we had a conversation last week, you know, we're, we're making sure that we're not having any duplication of effort, right? There's things on there, some of y'all's radar, that y'all are possibly doing in-house, have some plans to do. Um, and again, that's part of this process, is flushing out things that are maybe already in the, in y'all's willhouse, that we're not, uh, gonna duplicate efforts on some of these. Um, as we make our way kind of, uh, north in there into Sillsby, there's some areas that are west of ninety-two, um, uh, in north and south of, uh, highway twenty, uh, three twenty-seven, um, they could potentially have some, uh, some roadside ditch improvements, uh, culverts, uh, culvert replacements. Uh, we've identified some additional channelization improvements that could happen within Sillsby. Um, and that could also benefit, uh, have some of the, the, uh, the goals of LMI, um, as, uh, Patrick just, just kind of went through. Um, going up into the north part of the county after, uh, some meetings with, um, Commissioner Kirkendall, the Gore Store Road, uh, under a previous grant the county has, they, uh, they've been working on, uh, on redoing Gore Store Road, this would actually finish out Gore Store Road. Um, redo, uh, several crossings, uh, drainage crossings across Gore Store. Um, and then, as even recently as this morning, um, Commissioner Kirkendall and I sat down and, and, you know, identified some additional drainage projects that we're gonna be, um, evaluating and, and, and looking at. So, uh, Steve, I think that's a great idea, um, you know, if there's some time this week. I know we're unfortunately on a tight timeline, but we're making ourselves available to, to hammer out these kind of things, and, uh, get any and all input that we can, to, to at least get over.
But Monday will just be a, where we'll come back with a census, this is what we've identified, then from there, you'll pick out or do whatever.
Well, they're gonna kind of tell us what the cost is to do those, just a, a budgetary cost and what the benefit would be. And yet, then the, the plan is to start working on the application right after that?
Yeah, we really need to be able to come Monday with the draft, draft budget. We need to have a draft scope, we need to know what's LMI, what's not LMI, um, all, even with whatever we bring back.
Something else I wanna add on to what Jeff said earlier about any projects that y'all may have ongoing. If you've got something that you've been looking to do, and you're short two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, maybe we can partner up to get that done. And, and I'm just throwing that number out. Let's say there's something you've been wanting to do, but you just didn't have enough money to do it, maybe we can partner up to get some of these projects done.
Jeff, I know you and I spoke this morning, you asked me about my precinct, uh, and the major portion of that is Boggy Creek and my precinct. However, looking at this LMI map, there's portions of Sillsby that I spoke to Mr. Roger Martin, I know, uh, Deanne's here, but Roger's got, have, have you touched base with him at all? He's a public works left.
Sure, yes, um, yes, I actually met with Roger a week or so ago, I talked to Deanne some this morning, she had a, a list, um, that I was gonna have.
I didn't bring that up when you and I talked, but when I saw the LMI map, it falls within that category, so, thank you.
Are these all of the projects that you?
This is just, these are kind of just at the top of the list, uh, I know that we've, we've looked at, uh, potentially almost fifteen, um, but some of those are, are kind of pie in the sky thoughts, I, you know, at this point. So, it, it, at least for this meeting, this was kind of just at the top of the list. Uh, I think using this as a springboard to, to pursue some additional meetings, some additional input, um, would, would be a good thought.
Any detention anywhere?
Uh, we, we have looked at, uh, some possible detention, even, um, with some of the drainage improvements we've talked about this morning, uh, Commissioner Kirkendall. Um, we have some other projects that could potentially, um, the LMI portion really kind of is, is a big factor in this. So, uh, uh, at this point, early again, I wanted to speak, but yes, we, we have been trying to evaluate some different areas with detention.
A few weeks ago, didn't we have, um, from the DD six study that they did, didn't we have a few potential projects?
I, I reached back out, um, to Freeze on that, and they, they did take another look, and they actually redid some of their model. And they said that the, uh, those two locations that were kind of north, northwest of Sour Lake, were not actually yielding near the benefits that they thought they were, so...
What about, um, north of Lumberton?
Which we saw also with that, uh, detention pond, you were trying to do with the infrastructure money, didn't have enough benefit.
Right, there were some, um...
So, this is similar to that, I hate to interrupt you, but...
There were some that we saw on a map that were up north of Lumberton, uh, in the Boggy Creek watershed, that they had identified. The detention, and there was something.
That, um, that Freeze is in this pond?
I remember them looking at some channel improvements, which is, uh, I think is what you're talking about here with the Adler ditch, yeah?
Uh, yes, that that's correct.
On some of the detention, or detention ponds, Judge, we're gonna run into wetland and, uh, land acquisition as well. Yeah, because that's what we ran into under Act, yeah.
So, uh, anything else you wanna say before we ask for input?
At, at this point, just to keep this really high up, that's probably not it.
We'll start with Rob, you have anything that you can think of that we might need to look at?
My main thing is really channel improvements, channelization. Um, just from what I, you know, have seen, Alvin probably knows way better than I do, but it's... The, the thing that I saw, and I, I had printed something and gave it to Amanda during Harvey, when we had water backup, they have put a new spur on the railroad track from Cook's Lake all the way to the Y, basically. And that seems to be impeding water.
Yes.
Um, there, there's no, there's not enough drainage through there, and you can see that, you can go to Hurricane Harvey, Harvey imagery, to the NOAA site, and you can look and see the water built up over the tracks, and just spilling over, and there was a fairly good drop.
There's a huge issue with that.
Yeah.
On the railroad track.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And that's, to me, you know, I know there's a big trestle north, uh, east of town, uh, or kind of just on the northern end, and the east side, there's a trestle, trestle there that may, could use some improvements. Obviously, the Adler ditch, you, you go on one side of the highway, you see this wide, hundred and, you know, twenty feet wide, huge opening where this water comes through, where that ends up, after it goes through detention, is a little bitty folded ribbon ditch where that all leaves from. And that water floods over four-twenty-one every time we get a big, big rain.
Are you talking about Boggy Creek?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
It's, it's a ditch.
Yeah, it's just, and it, it goes through the, through the site there at the wastewater plant, it's just a little, small, I mean, that wide.
I've said that before. Mike, sir? Deanne, anything you can think of in the city of Sillsby that we need to be looking at, that we may not already?
Well, we have a lot, but I, I think our main concern would be that ditch that y'all have, where you have the culverts, where it stops from the city limits, right there at the end of the linda.
Yeah.
Because whenever it floods, part of it comes across the road before it gets to it, and then, if you go out there when it's raining, and once it gets through it, the other part can burst back in, which takes our north of the treatment plant underwater.
Yeah.
People get sewer...
You know what she's talking about?
Only Miller.
Yeah. Deanne, Jeff and I have talked about that, and we're actually gonna do boots on the ground, and look at some ways we can do that, um, on that, call it the west side of the bridge, to the left. I think if we could shave off that little point, to where that would open up, I think that's real good. And then, at some point, we need to try to get with the core, it's about thirty years of silt there. And I know at the bridge, I'm having to, uh, get the silt out about every four years. And it's up to three or four feet at times that were taken out over that width, and it's a lot, so Jeff and I are gonna look at that, because if we could, we could help shave off that point, and possibly remove some silt, maybe even at a later time, I think we need to identify it. I think that will help the Lumberton State's onslaught.
Yeah, because it causes us a lot of problems, we've had to replace the roads to the north treatment plant twice.
Yes.
And then, you know, we've tried for many grants to have that north treatment plant lifted.
Yeah.
But so far, we've had, we've been successful there.
Yeah, Jeff and I are supposed to go out and do that, so...
But we also got a project for the Lumberton linda, and that was one interest we had too, because they're doing some stuff with the drainage.
Yeah.
So, LJ A. is the engineer on that, but I didn't, I didn't see.
They were invited, but they did not, uh, they declined.
What's the project that you have?
Whenever y'all go out there, you wanna reach out to Roger and see if you'd like to reach out?
Yeah, it's a grant.
If you want to. Well, so that's what I wanna make sure, we keep all that, I'm with you. Yeah. Because they're doing Belinda. I think the grant project you have going on in Belinda, we wanna make sure that we don't, don't do anything to jeopardize that.
Yeah, because I think they're, they're altering the flow of the water already, I don't know exactly how they're doing it, I'll have to get with the engineer. But I know they had to change it a couple of times, I think they was trying to get some easements from some man that was wanting to handle, and they had to go a different route.
Yeah, we, uh, we gotta talk if those plans offline, just again, making sure our, that we're all on the same page, with work that's already being done, and so...
Would there be an issue with the grant they have going on, and we do other, uh, work that ties into that with that other grant? Would there be any conflict or issue with doing that?
I don't see why.
I'm looking the wrong way, but I should be looking.
What was the question again, I'm sorry.
It's, as far as having a project that the county does with, with these funds, that would essentially kind of tie up into the project that they're doing right now.
A different grant?
Yeah, no, no, so the only, we just need to have their demarcations, where this project starts, where this one.
The, the same, the same, um, same scenario as Gore Store Road, with the, with the proof that y'all have been making, and then we have another kind of continuation of that.
Those are both GLO grants, there shouldn't be any issue there.
That's right.
The Belinda State's grant, is that a GLO grant also?
No, I don't think so.
No, it, it's a Harvey round one.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll just make sure that we keep everybody in the loop on what's going on.
We also have a water development board grant that we received for a citywide drainage state. So, I didn't know, uh, spending the funds for that, which we haven't yet, would be something that y'all are already doing on, you know?
No, ma'am. We've applied for funding to study the Boggy Creek, Black Creek, and some others, but we, we haven't been awarded any of that yet. But no, no countywide study or anything like that.
I think Mill Creek's on there?
Yeah, I think Mill Creek is on there, that's right. Um, Mayor and Zeke, can y'all think of anything in your area that we need to have eyes on?
Believe it or not, Sour Lake doesn't have no problem.
Say it, say it again, I didn't hear.
Really, you know, it's nothing that we can't maintain in the city of Sour Lake. A lot of our outfalls go into the county, we have one over on Gate Street, uh, Amanda from Mary Ruth, we got a, a culvert there, it's a, it's like three twenty-four inch culvert. And it's always getting debris there, I'd like to see that addressed. And, uh, but other than that, the outfalls, once they fill up, that's when the city starts having a problem. Of course, the local flood in the city, not a lot. But when the outfalls, we had, I don't know, five or six outfalls that are pour drains sometimes, in very hardy.
Like Amy said, when we have a big downpour, the level does come up, and people don't understand that, they think, well, they just think we're doing something wrong. No, you, you got a lot of rain, right? But it goes out pretty quickly, pretty quick, pretty good. Uh, but you said, is it something like a hurricane or a big storm, the outfalls kills?
Yes.
About that.
I tell people all the time, Sour Lake's flat, harder drain flat.
Right.
As we all know, and I wanted to tell Amanda too, I think my ditch is clean. That's a private joke.
Been on the west for like two years.
Other than, we had a lot of, a lot of various issues.
Don't call the county judge and complain about your dishes, please. Thank y'all. Steve, what about Lumberton?
I'll take all the money you got.
Yes, sir, I know.
Find a place to play, we'll take all the money.
Yeah.
Our, our major outfall ditches that end up going to Pine Island, Pine Island and Village Creek, they're like this. And so, a lot of them, we don't... And so, a lot of them, we don't even have easement on them because they were one time, that's just where the good Lord made it. Now people own right up to that property, we can't even get in there and make that shit. So if we could secure, what we started doing, we just did Greensbridge, we signated that, and that's made great improvements. Adler ditch has gotten great improvements. We still got blanks on sixty-nine that we cannot pull because the downstream has not enough improvements based on text dot before they can pull them. So, and we started working on trying to get the detention pond, which y'all know the progress there that we're not hitting. We're not ready, you know, to reach a point to where, you know, we may pull from that, and we're gonna dig it ourselves, just have a dirt hauler come in here and take it out. They done offered us money to dig, and, and it makes sense now. Two years ago, if I'd have thought like this, I would have, we'd have probably been through with it, but we don't want to get a black eye to the county or nothing. So outfall ditches, that's, that's a major concern. We identified, we did a study, I think in two thousand and ten of the city, and identified all the little pinches, and we still have that study. Some of those we've been able to fix, some of them are still there. I'd love to show them to you guys, you know, so.
Y'all get together in the next few days?
Absolutely.
Are you available? Sunning season?
I'm changing.
Yeah.
I think it'll be a good idea that we get to meet, that way, actually, the plane, the planes.
Can you think of anything we hadn't already talked about, Troy?
Uh, no, the big thing in Lumberton would be that Adler ditch.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's kind of been on the city's radar for a while.
And I know that, uh, we was talking about the detention pond expansion, Aaron reached out to the state last week, and the state has, uh, I don't want to say they've approved it, but they've said, it looks good to us, now it's gone to FEMA for their review, so we're waiting to hear from them. And we have asked to try to get a decision by the end of the year, but it's in the federal government's hands, so.
And, and it's not us, it's way out of our, it's way up there somewhere, but it's not there at home.
And Aaron has asked them for a weekly update, so as, as he gets those, he's gonna forward them to y'all. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
The retention pond that they put just south of the city limits, back, they just finished it right after Harden.
Yes, sir.
I think we've had some results, some positive results there, we hadn't had the localized flooding. It's a thirty-acre pond holding ninety-eight feet of water, so I think that's been a help for Sour Lake, hopefully downstream a little bit too.
Good deal. Any commissioner have anything they want to add, or bring up, or discuss? Nothing at all? Anybody else? Ms. Bean?
Yes, I would like to ask, maybe I didn't hear, um, I don't know what you think, anyone? I didn't hear Kuntz mention, did I miss that?
I can tell you that Mr. Hutto is on the drainage committee, and he's made comments before similar to what Mr. Provost just said, that they don't have a problem with drainage in the city of Kings. They were invited to be here today, but they're not here, as you can see.
Well, I, if they have any trouble finding places that flood in Kings, I'll be happy to show them. Because there are places that flood continuously when it rains a lot, and it's been ongoing for years, and I, um, I see some of them aren't here because of working, I don't know, um, but I would just encourage you to go and look at these places and just see for yourself, you can hear about it, but seeing it's different than hearing it or reading it. I mean, just like going to a professional football game, watching it on TV and going to a person, there's no comparison at all.
It's better at home, bathroom, refrigerator's a lot smaller.
You don't have sixty-dollar parking. But anyway, I would like to know, you know, I would be happy to give you the addresses or go there and see yourself where these locations are. That's just people I know about, so.
Did y'all have anything else y'all wanted to show or, or bring up? If not, we have a motion to adjourn.
Um, no, no, sir.
Secretary Patrick? Had motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and the second by Commissioner Young to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all very much for your time today. And Jeff and Patrick, they're gonna be around, but if anybody wants to talk to you after that, okay?